If anyone's here for public comment, you can come sign in at this time.
Board members ready? Good evening, school board members, CCPS families, students, staff, and the Caroline community. I, Calvin Taylor, Chairman of the Caroline County School Board, would like to call the July School Board Meeting to order. It is my privilege to welcome those attending in person at Caroline High School as well as those viewing on our CCPS YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, heightened education awareness, and involvement. The school board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our school division in a forward direction as hashtag OneCaroline. Again, welcome to the school board meeting, and now I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Michael Hubbard, representing the Bowling Green District, Mr. Lydell Fortune, representing the Mattapani District, Mr. Calvin Taylor, representing the Port Royal District, Marcia Stevens, Chief Operations Officer and Superintendent Designee, Dr. Jerwanda Rollins Fells, representing the Reedy Church District, Mrs. Allison Sears, representing the Western Caroline District, Mr. Sean Kelly, representing the Madison District, and I'm Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now move to Words of Inspiration by Mr. Lydell Fortune, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being present tonight. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to offer words of inspiration. As quoted by Edward Hale, "Together" is one of the most inspiring words in the English language. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Together, families are stronger. Together, sports teams are victorious. Together, friendships are strengthened. Together is better when unity is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. If we could stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This takes us to approval of the July 14th agenda. Are there any additions to our agenda or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a sucker?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We would approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the agenda stands approved as presented. That takes us to Achieve 2027 Spotlight, the Achieve Update Year in Review. Mr. Mudd?
Good evening. There we go. I invite our Achieve Champions forward. They will be helping to present this topic this evening. It is that time of year where we are doing a year in review, recapping our successes and areas of focus for the coming school year. Good evening, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Mrs. Stevens tonight. Tonight, we present to you Achieve 27, Year Three in Review. Our presentation tonight will highlight successes for each goal area as well as focus areas for the '25-'26 school year. Our CCPS vision is to empower a community of lifelong learners to be 3E-ready. We do this through the creation of an inclusive culture where teaching and learning inspire and prepare students to be contributing citizens. Our strategic plan brings our vision to life through our goal-focused areas of teaching and learning, relationships, health and safety, and talent management. This evening, I'm joined by our Achieve Champions to provide you with an update for Achieve 27, '24-'25 Year in Review. First, we will be discussing Goal One, and I will be reading this one this evening. Ms. Brock, who is our Achieve Champion for Goal One, is unable to be with us tonight. I'm happy to share that team's successes. When we last reported to you in February, we identified the following areas as strategic actions for our work with this goal. Our accomplishments and successes in this spring include the full implementation of our new math curriculum, reading curriculum, benchmark advance, and successfully expanding our PBAs, especially in the science and history fields, under our academic objective. Under the access and opportunity objective, there was an increase in CTE courses and AP offerings, which in turn resulted in an increase in the amount of students enrolled in those programs. We also received a grant for the Botvin Life Skills Program, which will aid our middle school students with their mental health needs. Under the Profile of a Graduate objective, we are highlighting that teachers across the county received professional learning opportunities to increase their skills in using AI in the classroom to create greater efficiencies, and we still have work to do with that. We'll be continuing that in the new year as well. In addition, professional learning offerings to support the implementation of more opportunities for PBLs in the classroom is another highlight of this objective. And finally, CCPS is pleased with our countywide adoption of our new environmental literacy plan, which was rolled out and implemented this school year. In regards to focus areas in moving forward for Goal One, the big area of focus will be continued monitoring of the implementation of our reading and math standards with fidelity as monitored by our student growth and assessments, which is all part of the work we do in monitoring for accreditation. In addition to that, we will continue to implement the new curriculum standards and resources that we have received this past year and then will be receiving in math this current year, this coming year. And then we're also, one of the other focus areas for this team is examining activity bus route options for after-school, specifically for elementary students, so wanting to explore that a little bit. We're very pleased with the decreases in chronic absenteeism. For every school this year, we will continue the momentum as we seek to ensure that all schools have fewer than 15% of students chronically absent. Overall, we're very pleased with progress on Goal One, their successes, and we're excited about our roadmap for the coming school year to support new and continuing focus areas. Up next, Michelle Gonzalez will be highlighting Goal Two, Relationships.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mudd? Good evening. When we last reported to you in February, we identified the following areas as strategic actions for our work with this goal. Under Objective 2.1 Communication, several key initiatives were implemented to strengthen school-wide communication and engagement. The Attend Program provided an automated intervention system specifically targeting chronic absenteeism, aiming to increase student attendance through timely and data-informed outreach. The introduction of Connect, a unified communication platform, replaced previous systems like ClassDojo and School Messenger, offering a streamlined tool for teachers, families, and staff to stay connected. Additionally, the school climate survey was administered to both students and staff, serving as a valuable tool for gathering feedback on perceptions of the school environment and culture. This data is used to inform ongoing efforts to create a safe, inclusive, and engaging school climate. Aligned with Objective 2.2, which is the Teacher-Student Partnerships, several practices were put in place to deepen student ownership and strengthen connections between students and educators. In elementary schools, student-led conferences empowered students to actively reflect on their academic progress and share their learning with families, fostering accountability and pride. For students with disabilities, transition plans were formally implemented to outline individualized support and transition activities, ensuring successful movement between grade levels or programs. These plans often included structured transition meetings with staff and families. Additionally, the implementation of a designated transition day provided students entering pre-K, kindergarten, 6th grade, and 9th grade with a dedicated day to explore their new learning environments, build relationships with staff, and ease into the school year with confidence and support. Next slide. Thank you. Expanding Community Involvement, which is Objective 2.3, Partners in Education. This promoted collaboration through initiatives like the Preschool Policy Council and Preschool Wellness Day, which brought together families and community partners to support early learning. The annual PIE recognition event honored local partners for their contribution to schools, while the CHS Alumni Facebook Page and website strengthened connections with former students, building an engaged alumni network. Objective 2.4, Family Engagement. Fostered on deepening partnerships between families and schools, in addition to the student-led conferences, family engagement coordinators played a key role in promoting events that bring families into the educational process. The Preschool Policy Council also provided a platform for parent voice and decision-making, and the attendance officer worked closely with families to ensure consistent attendance, contributing to both academic success and overall student well-being. Our focus areas for Goal Two, as we look ahead to the coming school year, we're excited to build on the progress made and expand our impact through several key focus areas. One major initiative is the development of a stakeholder survey. This tool will gather meaningful input from students, families, staff, and community members to better understanding their perception, needs, and priorities. The feedback we receive will help inform our strategies and strengthen our connections across Caroline County. We'll also continue emphasizing productive struggle in classrooms, our powerful instructional approach that challenges students with rigorous tasks designed to stretch their thinking. Another exciting step forward is the expansion of the student-led conferences to the secondary level. Caroline Middle School will begin implementing next year, empowering students to take greater ownership of their learning, and Carolina High School is expected to follow in the future. Our ongoing commitment to celebrating excellence will continue through the CCPS Hall of Fame, which honors individuals who have made lasting contributions to our schools and community. This initiative not only recognizes service but also strengthens our sense of district pride and legacy. Additionally, we are expanding our preschool offerings to include a peer modeling classroom. These inclusive environments support social, emotional development, and build strong peer relationships. We're proud of the work accomplished this year under Goal Two and look forward to deepening that success as we pursue these new areas of focus in the upcoming year. And up next, we have Rachel Wheeler, who will share updates related to Goal Three. Thank you.
Good evening. I am proud to present on Goal Three for Health and Safety. You can see we have several accomplishments that we can check off for '24-'25 and be proud of. Those range in different areas from extended staff support for our school-based staff, as well as strengthened mental health initiatives, enhanced behavioral and SEL supports for our students, and improved special education services on our school buses, as well as a great increase in RBT/BCBA trained staff. When we look at crisis prevention and preparedness highlights, we have made so many facility and equipment enhancements, and as everyone knows, we are continuing that great work. We have secured over $300,000 for safety grants and implemented several measures for emergency preparedness. For facility management, we have continued to monitor and evaluate our efficiency with our infrastructure systems and developed some facility improvements and accessibility for our school buildings so that all will feel welcome in our school communities. Moving forward, we've identified a few areas for health and safety. We do want to explore more mental health wellness supports for staff and work on enhancing our student support services through additional care team training. We will also be looking to develop a care center where we can support our students and families with clothing, food, and basic and physical needs. We are already underway with enhancing our crisis response protocols. These will be protocols for our school-based mental health teams to implement after a crisis. And we are going to continue our efforts to focus on refining our prevention, response, and recovery strategies to continue to maintain safe learning environments for all. That was a lot. I'll hand it over to Ms. Brown, who is our Goal Four Champion.
Good evening. We are excited about Goal Four for Talent Management. New supplemental insurance will be started as Athlack will be going away. The Pierce Group will be starting for the '25-'26 school year. We have conducted stay interviews, which has really helped to keep and recruit many of our CCPS employees. We were also very, very blessed to have our $1,000 retention bonus for all our returning employees. We also partners with the University of Mary Washington to do our mentorship program that completed their second year and trained an additional five more teachers to serve as mentors within our schools. Human Resources has launched their new internal webpage for employees for greater assistance on accessing different forms and any information. HR has also expanded their office hours into the buildings to support our employees on-site. And we've also continued our Richmond Teacher Residency Partnership. Areas moving forward, we will be developing a growth group, or a focus group, on developing a career ladder for paraprofessionals, extending partnerships with different universities to recruit career changers with aspiring teacher leadership programs, extending the I Teach program with VDOE to more employees has been instrumental with the hiring process currently. CDL classes and licenses extended to current CCPS employees to recruit even more bus drivers. Next is Mr. Mudd and Ms. Young to close out our presentation and to recap Achieve 2027 Year in Review.
All right. Thank you. So, as you can see, we've been busy this year, and we have a lot of great things that we're looking forward to in the year ahead as well. We're very proud of the work happening in Caroline and excited to share our story with the community. And it's that time of year that we get, at this point, to now put it all in one spot for us to celebrate and for our community to be aware of as well. So, Ms. Young is going to close us out and talk about our Year in Review book.
Good evening. So, I have laid a lot of these books on your chairs for distribution. We're super excited. Fresh off the press is our second Year in Review. We did one last year like this. It's full of great information. It's also available as a flipbook on our website. It was in the July issue of the CCPS Express, and it will be in the August issue as well. We're going to get these distributed throughout our community, share them with our business partners, get them out to our families. I'm giving all the principals' copies. If you all want more, please let me know, but it's, again, full of really exciting, good information from the year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about any of our successes or goal areas from the year.
Well, thank you very much for the information. Are there concerns or questions, comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just for clarity. Where can I find the electronic copy of the Year in Review? It's fabulous. I want to make sure I get it out.
Yep. It's actually embedded in Dr. Calverick's message on the main first page of our website right now, and then it's also in the CCPS Express.
Can we explore having it?
We can put it up at the top. I'm sure we can put it at a button at the top of the page. That way, it's on all of them. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or concerns?
I may.
Certainly.
Let's start with the last. Is there any issue with posting that link on social media platforms?
I actually think I did that before we went on vacation, but we can do that again.
That's okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Great work. A lot of work has gone into this, and I certainly appreciate it. With all the data that you've gathered and collected, has that data led you to see a need to adjust any of these goals or to tweak them in any way?
Yes. That's a great question. I think an area that we're continuing to strive for is how we capture our metrics and then how we use those to help share our story. But certainly, the information that you heard here tonight is compiled from both data by numbers, but also by the anecdotal evidence that these folks are collecting from their various team members and others in the school division. And so, to answer your question, the focus areas identified are identified from the data as well as the are identified from the data as well as the conversation with team members in determining which direction we need to go next. In some cases, it's continuing some of the work, and in others, it's exploring new areas depending on the goal.
Okay, great. Kind of do a little deep dive here. How, this is a subjective question. How do you think we did in the area of Objective 2.1, specifically with regards to engaging with families? That's a subjective question, so what are your thoughts?
I think we did an amazing job. I think that one of the things... Sorry. I think, first of all, it's a great question. I think we've done an amazing job. I think one of the things that what we're seeing is as we learn and get more information, we realize that there is a need that opens up. So, for example, I'll do through the preschool lens where a lot of the teachers were using Class Dojo in their classroom, but then other classrooms were using another platform. So, by looking at the different lenses and that we're communicating with families using different platforms, this is bringing it together and saying, "Let's try to streamline it, and let's try to make sure that we're communicating with families more intentionally and more streamlined." So, does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, and I...
I was going to jump in, and our new platform, the Connect Platform, has the ability, as she said, it's going to replace all those other, the Dojo, the different ones. And so, what the families are going to see is that they can use the same platform as their child progresses through all the different grades and schools.
Consistency and continuity.
Consistency, and it has the ability to translate messages, and that's been very interesting. As we've sent messages out recently, it actually tells us how many families have selected Spanish, and we can send messages out that way. So, I feel like that's going to continue to build as well.
Great, thank you. The reason I'm asking that question because I know that my colleagues and I have had some concern as to are we effectively reaching out to the parents? Because we know that the parents play a critical role in the partnership that is education. So, I really appreciate that.
Dr. Hubbard, I think as we examine particular family engagement events or activities or ways to communicate, and we see the successes, particularly where we have a lot of engagement, I think that then gives us information to determine in the future how we might use similar modes of communication to attract families to engage with us. One very recent success is happening as we speak with our STEM community activities happening. We've had very good participation with that this summer. So, again, on the back end of that, looking to see what brought people out, and then how do we recapture that in other ways for other events or other ways to engage families? Yes, sir.
Only two more. Help me understand what a peer modeling classroom is. I mean, that's the first I've heard that.
We have two of my counterparts, so...
Who are they?
Andrea Roth and then Paulette Heron. So, we are taking preschool, and we are taking our early childhood special education classroom, and we are bringing them together to do that hashtag #OneCarolinePreschool again. So, where we have classrooms that have early childhood special education students, students that have been identified with a disability, we are bringing peer models or students that do not have a disability into those classrooms in order to aid in functional skills and teaching those kids how to self-regulate and showing those kids some of the play-based ways of playing together and self-regulating and those types of things. So, it's just a really great opportunity to bring more opportunities for learning into these classrooms.
And at the end of the day, what we are saying is everyone can achieve.
Correct.
Everyone.
Yep, very inclusive.
That's important, and I think we would hear that echoed by the two leaders in the back that have mentioned that.
Yeah, very excited about this. So, thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate it.
I'll add, Dr. Hubbard, that the curriculum is the same. So, all of our preschool classrooms, teachers will be using the same standards and curriculum resources. And so, to your point, it is curriculum for all, no matter your ability or disability. And so, this particular model has been around in Virginia for some time and has proven to be of benefit for all students, both those that are typically developing as well as those with disabilities.
And I'll be honest, that was a little misleading because I have been edumacated by the two leaders in the back on that. I just wanted to reinforce that every opportunity that I can. Last question, and I'll be done, Mr. Chair. I did hear, and I just want to clarify, all employees in CCPS received a $1,000 bonus. All.
Ms. Stevens is going to chime in here for you, Dr. Hubbard.
Dr. Hubbard, the $1,000 retention bonus was, the employee had to perform an action. The action was signing their contract for the physical year 26 by a particular date and deadline. All those employees that performed that action did receive the $1,000 bonus in their June contract.
The only reason I ask that is because when we use the word "all", and then the publication goes out, and folks maybe didn't meet that requirement, the request or the question that will come back to me is, "Well, I didn't get that." So, I'm just making sure I understand what we understood to mean "all." That's okay. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for the update. It's obvious that we are being proactive as opposed to being reactive. So, many of the issues that we would be faced with because of this action, we are not faced with. And so, the board certainly appreciates that, and we thank you so much for what you did. That takes us to Board Committee Updates. At this time, I'll start with Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. The only committee that I've been to, the Mary Washington Lab School Board Met, and we talked about doubling the size of the school they're going to have sophomores in this year and doubling the staff and how to handle leftover monies at the end of the year, which there really wasn't a lot, and getting a concrete way to perform a director's evaluation, which we, Caroline County, has had a big hand in because I think we do a really good job with superintendent evaluation. And just looked at really what their model is to try to grow and potentially add some additional school divisions in. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sears?
Mr. Chair, I have no committee reports for this month. Thank you.
Dr. Rollins Fales?
Yes, sir. I had the opportunity to go to the CASBA Safety Conference, which is a national conference, and I will be more than glad to share the information that I'm bringing back with Dr. Calverick and Mr. Wick. We had the opportunity to hear from the principal at Columbine High School and the response teams that come out after an event. And so, in listening to the update previously, it sounds like our mental health piece and our counseling piece is something that we're already paying attention to, but I would like to share those resources.
Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not attend any committee meetings since our last school board meeting, but I am excited to participate next Wednesday in our quarterly Carolina Education Foundation meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Hubbard?
Nothing to report, Chuck.
And I have nothing to report at this time, well, not from the committee. And maybe I could save this for later, but the board did do a retreat this past week, which was very, very good, I thought. We got to sit down and to talk about the strengths of the board and how we can better serve the students in this county. I won't go into details. Some of the board members probably will talk a little bit about it a little bit later. But just for your information, we did do a retreat, and we are, again, a master board. We were able to complete our master board training, which I'm very proud of the fact that our board is still pursuing that. It means that we are going the extra mile to do what we need to do in order to serve the students of this county. And again, you probably will be hearing a little bit more about that, but when you're the last person to speak, you got to get the jump because they say all the good stuff. So, we'll move right along with that. We don't have any recognitions this month since July, and so that takes us to the information from the district. The Plan Forward Partnership Benchmark Advanced Implementation and Secondary Teacher Efficiency with Ms. Haley and Dr. Neighbors.
Summer Brain. All right. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Ms. Stevens. It is my pleasure to share the end-of-the-year review from our partnership with Dr. Anne Spear at Plan Forward in partnership with Ms. Haley, who's not able to be here tonight. So, Kim Hayeslip, our ELA specialist, is here as well, and to share about our monitoring of progress of the Benchmark Advanced Implementation at elementary and teacher efficiency at secondary level. We are very grateful for this partnership and thrilled Dr. Anne Spear could be here tonight to share the results of this work.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I appreciated what I heard on the updates of Achieved 2027, and what you're going to hear tonight in this presentation is some of the metrics that allowed them to get to some of those wonderful successes over the years. So, thank you for the opportunity of sharing the end-of-the-year review on behalf of this partnership between Plan Forward and Caroline County Public Schools. I am Dr. Anne Spear, the CEO of Plan Forward, and I'm excited to walk you through a reflective data review that looks at the CCPS's teams and how they supported their teachers' learning in the secondary level and how they monitored the curriculum implementation at the elementary level during this year. Through our partnership, we monitor the work in order to get feedback to be able to tell the impact stories of the successes at Caroline County schools. And we are able to show through the evidence that was found in some of these monitoring events that beyond the test scores of the team, they were able to grow the ability to give the best educations to the students of Caroline County Public Schools. So, tonight, we're going to go over three things. First, I'm going to do a brief review of the progress monitoring of the curriculum, K-5 ELA build-out. And then, we're going to go into depth on two surveys. One is the end-of-year evaluation of measurement of feedback for the support of the elementary ELA teachers, and then in order to report the end-of-the-year teacher efficacy at the secondary level and where we saw the benchmark at the beginning of the year and how you ended at the end of the year. So, first, we're going to go ahead and dive in to be able to understand how the curriculum unfolded. So, we conducted the monitoring of the curriculum in three phases. So, first in August, and Dr. Haley was very pivotal in being able to identify where do we need to be asking and what insights, and when do we need to hear teachers' voices to make sure there's a success. At the very beginning of the year, you may remember, as we presented in the October board meeting, we asked, "Are teachers ready and prepared to teach this curriculum?" And what we found with 53 responses from teachers is that while there was a need for more training, there was a general positive attitude with the curriculum that was selected, and the teachers were excited about the potential results. This is huge because we know that research shows that when teachers believe in a curriculum and they have the ownership of it, they're going to implement it with fidelity. This is something that the team at Caroline County did great before choosing and launching the curriculum. They also acted on that need for additional training, and they brought in additional professional learning, as you probably remember. And so, we wanted to measure after receiving that additional support, were the teachers feeling that they could make this work? And what we learned from a total of 73 teachers at the elementary level is that they continued to feel confident about the curriculum, but they struggled with the usability of the resource library. You're going to hear later on how the team addressed this and moved forward towards the end of the year. By May, it was time to ask, "How can I improve?" And that is why we launched into a survey to get their feedback on the feedback that they were receiving. And this is what I will go into detail in the next slide. So, to understand how the walkthroughs, which the team took great care in implementing and structuring and thinking through, we conducted a focus survey on 66 of the teachers, all represented in the K-5 grade levels across all three schools. We sought to understand how teachers interpreted and applied that feedback that they got, how those feedback conversations supported their professional growth, and how the instructional coaching can be approved as we go into the next year. So, what we learned is that the educators emphasized that the feedback was most powerful when it was specific, affirming, and actionable. Teachers, especially those young in their careers, said that the balanced feedback allowed them to engage more in building new strategies, as well as feeling confident that they could continue to build their skills. At the schools such as Bowling Green and Lewis and Clark, the affirmation was linked to a greater willingness to go above and beyond and try additional strategies. Mid-to-late career educators, particularly in the third to fifth grades, stressed the importance that the feedback was aligned to their current curricular demands, and that could help them really address the real challenges going on in their classroom. The written notes, which was a huge add to the team, was in particularly bound to be very vital from the responses of the survey. The teachers reported that they clarified the intent, promoted reflection, and helped even the experienced teachers maintain and improve their strategies. Along with the value feedback, many of the educators did cite a couple of things to learn from. They said timing of the walkthroughs in the feedback conversations were important, especially when there was a time during high-stakes periods, it was hard for them to apply the feedback and absorb it. The second was that they wanted to make sure that the feedback felt relevant to their daily practices so that they feel that they could absorb it and for it to be more specific rather than general in nature. And then, finally, the teachers really enjoyed having observers who had been in their footsteps, had been in the classroom recently and had taught. This is pretty evident, as we're always seeking to learn from those who have been in our footsteps. But this allows us to understand that when the feedback is successful, it's successful when it's structured in a human-centered process, which the team at Caroline was good at achieving. The teachers thrived when given peer collaborative time, and they really responded to the modeling of the coaches. So, when they got feedback of a certain strategy, being able to see that in practice was something that they felt that allowed them to be more successful in their own classrooms. Everyone, from the new teachers to the veterans, voiced a strong preference for that prompt, written, and clearly communicated feedback. So, this tells us that we're reminded, it isn't just what we say, it is how, when, and by who we engage the educators in the process and getting them their voice. So, to hear a little bit more about the action steps, I'm going to let Kim share.
Good evening. Our journey with a new core instructional program for K-5 English Language Arts has been thoughtful and intentional, as you've heard along the way, beginning prior to last year. In response to feedback and with a goal of building knowledge and capacity for quality implementation of the K-5 HQIM Benchmark Advance, in early fall of 24-25, we created an opportunity for teachers to express interest in additional "Train the Trainer" professional learning with Benchmark Advance and to become Benchmark Champions for their buildings and grade-level bands. The Benchmark Advanced Champions participated in targeted professional learning with a benchmark education consultant twice during the year and co-facilitated half-day planning sessions with reading specialists for PLC teams during the year as well. This final survey that Dr. Spears highlights tonight encompassed all observation formats using connected observation tools for those purposes. So, administrator observations, content learning walks, and division learning walks. In response, action steps will link to this survey data as well as other survey data collected with Plan Forward. Action steps will include a concrete phase plan. So, this summer and... So this summer and very early in the school year, we have a continued focus on lifting a standard walkthrough tool or template, the Benchmark Advance Implementation Look For Document. A dedicated professional learning session for elementary administrators in late July with our Benchmark Consultant will be focused on the use of the aforementioned Look For Document and just help to give them a really clear picture of what to expect as they go into the classrooms now that we have year one under our belts, just getting an even clearer picture of what am I looking for for each of the components of Benchmark Advance and ELA as I enter the classrooms. In the fall of 2025, we'll have ongoing discussion and reflection cycles embedded in PLC meetings and will equip teachers with personal reflection tools that encourage goal setting and self-assessment. Planning sessions focused on the HQIM will be supported by reading, by building-level reading specialists. We will continue to focus on professional learning, providing models of high-quality instruction, and to strategically schedule opportunities for learning walks and focus on providing timely, constructive, actionable feedback to support ongoing and sustainable success with the implementation of Benchmark Advance. Additionally, we will continue to monitor our feedback practices and focus on professional growth through Plan Forward surveys and school-based coaching touchpoints.
Thank you. So now some more good news going to the secondary schools. As you may remember, in October, again, we presented a initial teacher efficacy and leadership efficacy survey to be able to know where are your principal school leaders as well as your teachers and their efficacy to build on their professional learnings. In May, we surveyed 122 secondary educators with that same survey to assess the efficacy in their classroom management, their instructional strategies, and the professional learning. This was what we call a summative assessment, which allows us to be able to compare the results from where they started to where they ended up. And I do want to give kudos to the whole team at Caroline County because it's not easy to put yourself out there to get feedback because you never know what you might get. In this case, though, you have a team that is doing truly amazing work and we're honored to be able to uncover some stories that numbers don't always tell. The survey's results were overwhelmingly encouraging. In fact, there wasn't a single question that we measured where we saw a decline or lack of growth. For example, the teachers' confidence leveled, most notably doubled from the fall to the spring. From 75 teachers reporting extreme confidence in the spring, from 27 in the fall. Confidence in implementing new strategies also grew significantly while those that reported lack of confidence declined. Coaching and peer mentorship appears to have had a direct impact on their perceived abilities. Teachers affirmed that classrooms' win, both instructional and behavioral, was able to give them more confidence in their ability to make a change and grow professionally. In the fall, the teachers had reported heavy reliance on external support with limited self-reflection and low active coping skills. During the year, as the team focused on their PLC structures, that included the intentional reflection, instructional rounds, as well as teacher coaching and more targeted professional learning. What we saw in the spring is that educators expressed that deeper internal confidence, empowered by the successes they experienced over the years. They reported lower anxiety and a higher ability to be able to implement new behavioral structures in their classrooms. I'm going to pass it now to Dr. Neighbors to talk a little bit more about the action steps.
Thank you, Dr. Spears. So based on these survey results, we have insight to what has been most effective, coaching and peer mentoring. However, time is a persistent challenge. Teachers also report availability in support structures, meaning that some teachers fill more resource than others, so we have some differential there. These findings point us toward addressing a greater system-level consistency and continuing to build our professional learning offerings. For this upcoming year, we strive to continue to deepen the work with coaching, peer mentoring, and relevant and timely professional learning designs. We will address the time constraints by embedding more professional learning in existing structures such as faculty meetings, department meetings, as well as giving teachers choice in relevant and timely professional learning on our three half-days built into our calendar. We will use no-nonsense nurturer training for all of our new teachers to build confidence in managing behavior and our coaches will use this to support a safe and supportive learning environment. And finally, the continued use of instructional rounds that we began at both CMS and CHS will be another structure to help provide meaningful feedback to teachers and build collaboration. In closing, this work represents the hard work of the entire staff of CCPS. When we intentionally measure, we are able to have insight into the impact as well as respond to the needs and we are appreciative of the partnership with Plan Forward and Dr. Anne Spear. We've made progress and we identified areas to strengthen. We look forward to building on the foundation and continuing to invest in teacher growth, student outcomes, and a culture of learning. We will be continuing to monitor the work along with our priorities next year and be able to share the impact stories of Caroline County Public Schools. Thank you, and we're happy to take any questions. And please know you each have a folder with the full report from both these data dives.
Board members have questions? If not, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment or several comments. Well, first of all, thank you for the program. I'm certainly impressed with what I hear, especially when it comes down to working individually with teachers and going into their rooms and talking to them and giving them feedback as to how they can do a more effective job. We know that classroom management and student behavior ranks extremely high when it comes to achievement. And the fact that students or the teachers are saying they are relying less on outside help says to me that they have learned the skills necessary to deal with the situations themselves. Those of us who have been in the classroom know that it is the teacher that makes the difference in that classroom. And when that teacher gets the skills that's necessary to take care of the management issues, it makes them strong. And it also helps them to develop the kind of relationship with students that will have a student meet you on the street five years from now and say, I appreciate what you did for me. I appreciate the time that you put in. And that's the most rewarding thing. It doesn't put money in your pocket, but it makes your chest grow. So thank you so much for all of your help and assistance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Spears, there were two points that you made that I hope everyone hears, not only in here but also through the network. And that was a point where you said beyond the test scores. And you also mentioned that the numbers can't always tell the story. And I think as a division, school division, whether here or in higher education, this is a fact that we have got to be able to get our arms around. The data is good. I respect the data and will always drive on, you know, data-driven decisions. But at some point in time, as human beings, as educators, we have to truly understand what the numbers mean. And I think what you've been able to articulate here is that you've done that. You've looked at beyond the numbers and you have governed yourselves accordingly. My question is, are we funded for your services into the next year? Is that a part of the contract? Am I not allowed to ask that question?
Any question?
Whether we get an answer is another story, right?
Well, I'd like to make two comments. This is data, which is what's, it helps understand the data and it allows your team to be coaches so they have the insights to know that what they're doing is working, whether the numbers tell us something. But we also know sometimes it's a long game. But it gives them the insight so that they can be confident in what their decisions are when they're going to their teachers. And we are actually a fairly local. I'm a Caroline community member by default of my parents. And so we make sure that you can afford our services.
By default, you said?
Well, I don't want to claim residency. I don't like to lead. I am dad after all, so I like the honesty and transparency. But I am here quite frequently and getting, and part of the community in a lot of ways. So it's quite an honor to be part of the community and the school district.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one comment.
I'm sorry.
And this is directed to Dr. Neighbors. One of the things that I know I've had, I don't want to say a concern, but it's an area of opportunity, is our PLCs. So I was relieved to hear how much is being embedded in that and then the value of having a third party to ask the honest questions and get the honest feedback. I also wanted to say that, and I believe it was in the last couple of years, we had to make a decision about extending the contracts for our instructional leaders. And I think this is a return on the investment of having you all come in and having more time to prepare. There was also another piece, active coping. It was something that I made a note of. And so from an HR standpoint, when we look at test scores and teacher retention, this is speaking to a positive climate. So I'm really glad to hear that we are a place that our staff feels empowered to do what they need to do. So thank you for that. And if we can continue to support in that PLC model, I think that's a great place for us to grow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and effort. That takes us to Agenda Item B, Information, Summer Academy, Ms. Haley. And I believe Ms. Haron. Technology or something, isn't it? Oh, that means you can't talk no more. He planned that.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board and Ms. Stevens. Tonight, we'd like to share with you some of the highlights from the 2025 Summer Academy ESY Program that was hosted at Lewis and Clark Elementary School and Caroline High School. Ms. Leila Raja Blan will highlight our Elementary Summer Academy. Mr. Samuel Perkins could not be here tonight. He had a family emergency. So I will be filling in to highlight our Secondary Summer Academy. And Ms. Paulette Haron will highlight our ESY Program.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Michael Mudd, school board members, and our designated guests. It is an honor to present to you our Elementary Summer Academy Destination Success Presentation. And thank you for your leadership and ongoing support of our students and our schools. Summer Academy integrated our three elementary schools, BGES, MES, MEES, and LCES, pairing two teachers per grade to serve a total of 211 rostered. Student enrollment included preschool through fifth grade, resulting in BGES 72 present with 12 no-shows, MES 71 present with 18 no-shows, and LCES with 68 present with seven no-shows. Students enjoyed the warm weather outside and science activities implemented in the garden, interactive classroom experiences, the continuation of our high-quality instructional curriculum, Benchmark Advance, and moving with math hands-on instruction. In addition, we piloted the University of Florida Literacy Institute, UFLI, foundations, resources to target students' varying needs. Students received breakfast, lunch, and weekend meals. To foster community engagement, students and staff regularly participated in weekly gatherings and enjoyed Spirit Week activities. Furthermore, the first week featured our enrichment camp, specifically designated for gifted search learners. This daily program provided rising second through fifth graders with opportunities to participate in critical thinking exercises, rigorous and interactive brain teasers, and engaging hands-on activities. Our invited students, their parents, our teachers, and staff embarked on a wonderful learning experience, reaching new academic heights, making new friends, sharing memorable experiences, and destination filled with success. Collectively, our students achieved an 88% growth in ELA and 95% growth in math. While inconsistent attendance may have been a factor to impact some results, we believe that our Elementary Summer Academy was instrumental in furthering students' skills and preparing them for a successful 2025-2026 school year. The theme Destination Success was achieved through excellent educational experiences for all students. We are grateful to our teachers and staff who championed the way during the four-week program. They brought their energy and passion to this experience. Thanks to our Transportation Department, who safely delivered our students to school and home. And finally, thanks to our amazing Nutritional Department that kept our scholars well-fed and supported our program goals. I will leave you with some survey, excuse me, with some survey feedback from our staff. Many of staff members shared that the most enjoyable part of Summer Academy was the fellowship with the staff and admin was helpful and transparent about expectations. Another major highlight was the impactful use of the UFLI Phonics Program, which several teachers praised. It was encouraging to hear that the materials, especially in literacy, were seen as an appropriate and helpful. Teachers also reported that they were better able to meet student needs, build community, and maintain instructional momentum. Lastly, it's worth noting how powerful it was for some teachers to be working with students from their home schools. That familiarity helped tailor instruction and support where it was needed most. As with any program, there are areas of opportunity that included direct supports and some behaviors. But today, I want to shine a spotlight on the good, our commitment, our community spirit, and our determination to create a meaningful experience for our students in the summer. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to coordinate, lead, and serve alongside Mr. Townsend, our ESY Coordinator. We thank everyone for their exceptional work as we believe that together, we've made a lasting impact and a successful destination for Elementary Summer Academy. Thank you.
Elementary Summer Academy sounds way fun. This year, Secondary Summer Academy has our strongest implementation yet. With 258 students served across CHS and CMS and Lotus Academy and the standalone SOL Boot Camp, we saw a 94% credit recovery rate at the high school level, two summer graduates, and the lowest student removal count in three years. Attendance remained exceptionally strong with CMS recording just 18 absences across a possible 1,104 possible student days. That's adding up all of those students. And the CHS logging a mere 1.02% loss of instructional time. So our students were on task there doing the work. Strategic changes such as scheduled breaks. This year at middle school, we had a recess break. Clear expectations and student incentive systems boosted engagement, focus, and instructional effectiveness. We also had clear goal setting for our high school students as they came in and worked through their credit recovery. Even with minor staffing absences, instructional continuity remained steady. Even with minor staffing absences, instructional continuity remained steady thanks to a team being really flexible and sharing coverage. Notably, the Secondary Summer Academy also provided a vital second chance for S O L retesters with Algebra I achieving a 50% pass rate from the bootcamp testers and other subjects like biology, history and reading also yielding measurable gains. These successes reflect the strength of our instructional model and the responsive system that we put in place. Mr. Perkins wants to note he's especially grateful to the hardworking working staff as well as I and the central office team and our transportation department, whose reliability and collaboration helped to make this environment possible. Together, we built a summer program that delivered meaningful academic growth, consistent support and elevated a great experience for our students. And now to Ms. Heron.
This year's Summer Academy also hosted the E S Y program at Lewis and Clark Elementary and Caroline High School. We serviced a multitude of students with various disabilities. Forty-three students at Lewis and Clark Elementary and 14 students at Caroline High School. All students participated in fun-filled activities that focused on their academic, social, emotional and functional needs. Some highlights include our collaborative partnership at C H S with the STEM program, providing our students with a unique experience with our community partners. In addition, our elementary E S Y was provided support through community partners as well as through summer treats. E S Y goals were met for all of our students that attended E S Y. We would like to thank all of the school administration, maintenance staff, transportation staff, custodial staff and our summer academy and E S Y staff for making the 2025 Summer Academy E S Y program a success. At this time, we would answer any questions the board may have.
Does board members have questions about the Summer Academy at this time?
Are we funded? It works. It didn't work there, sir. Are we funded for next summer as well for these programs?
Summer school funding is a state-funded project. It comes out as for the fiscal year for 26. We will report these numbers. We will receive our funding for this year. Next year, the same thing for 27. It'll be next year's budget that funds the school funds summer school.
Again, thank you so much again for what you do. Summer Academy. And you know, I can remember when I was working, I always worked during the summer. Well, I needed the money for one thing, but the other thing, more importantly, you really formulate some really good relationships with children during the summer. You know, you have a smaller group and so you get to do some things individually that you may not be able to do in a regular program. So it works. It's good. And thank you so much for what you did. All right, that takes us to school status with Mr. Wick. Mr. Wick is a newlywed, so he can't stay too long, so you don't.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. I'll be leaving right after this soon as I finish. Good evening, Chair Mr. Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board and Ms. Stevens. I have Ms. Gardner here with me from Attend and she is going to do an update of our Attend program that we initiated this year and it's a follow-up to a presentation that you heard in February. So Ms. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Wick, faculty and staff of Caroline County Public Schools and the community members present here tonight. My name is Sarah Gardner. I oversee our Virginia partnerships at School Status. We partner with districts across the country on school-to-home communications through School Status Connect, which you all are partnered with us for also. And teacher growth and development through School Status Boost. This year, we began working with your district on Attend, a comprehensive tool that automates attendance interventions and provides a data platform to support your staff. Tonight, we're going to go through a brief overview of your current attendance trends. We're going to start with a 10,000-foot view of attendance. So our attendance rate is showing the days that were available for students to be in school, how many students were able to be there for learning time. Keep in mind, this is comparing Caroline. Thank you. Did I not turn it on? Okay. Pull it closer. Is that better? Sorry, I'll start again. We're starting with a 10,000-foot view of attendance. So the attendance rate that you're seeing here is showing the days that were available for students to be in school and how many students were able to be there for learning time. Keep in mind that this is comparing Caroline County's data to our School Status Attend average. It is as in the average attendance for all of our partner districts across the country. As we continue to partner together, so next year when I come to do this presentation, we'll use your own year-over-year data for comparison, but just for the purposes of tonight, we have that average for all of our partners. This data was run on May 22nd, so right up through the end of your school year. Currently, we're seeing that our attendance rate is 93.9%. On average, as of the last day of school, students have missed nearly 10 days of school each. For our grade groups, all of our grade groups are above the attendance rates of our other Attend districts across the country. And we're seeing the biggest increases in our ninth through 12th grade families, which is phenomenal for high school groups, something to be very proud of. We're now going to look at our end-of-the-year summary. You'll see here that we broke your active student population out into different categories based on their absences. Excellent, satisfactory, manageable, chronic and severe chronic. Let's start with the kids and families to celebrate, your excellent and satisfactory attendance groups. This is 53% of your active student population. These students have missed less than 5% or less than eight and a half days of school. Our goal is always to grow excellent and satisfactory and shrink everything else on that pie chart. So now let's look at the manageable category, which represents 1,400 students. These are our tipping point kids. Positive attention at the beginning of this coming school year will go a long way with these students who fell within this category during the 2024-2025 school year. Let's now look at our students falling within the chronically absent category. This is 13% of your active student population. The student list can be pulled from Attend and be seen by campus to make action here more targeted moving into the new school year. We also have 136 students who are falling into the severe chronic distinction. The team will continue to support these students and families, but it's worth noting that the last time we presented here, this number was 145. So from February to May, we got nine students out of this category, which is great. Your schools have been doing a phenomenal job focusing on all kids, not just absent kids, but the kids who consistently show up to school every day. There's a lot to celebrate here. We'll go to the next slide. Thank you. Here, we're looking at a grade level chronic rate. We're seeing nationwide, our attendance is improving for our Attend partners. And in many grade levels, we see that Caroline County is actually doing better than our average Attend district. That light blue line represents about 2 million students across the country. And Caroline County is below the average for our pre-K and kindergarteners, our second graders, fourth and sixth through 12th graders. Our other partner districts have a lot to learn from Caroline County's high schoolers and the attendance team there. We're seeing the highest chronic rates in our first graders, third and fifth graders. I'm excited to continue working with you all to bring down these chronic rates even further. Here, we're comparing ethnic groups to give an equity view of attendance. Our goal is to move everyone into the excellent and satisfactory groups and have these evened out. Oh, some of the numbers came out funny there. I'll re-add this slide for you all so that they are percentages and not strange-looking numbers. On the next slide, we're seeing that subgroups are performing similar to the average student population, but we need to pay special attention to our McKinny Vento students. Here's our daily attendance as a division. It's run through the last day of school. This report is also available in Attend by each campus. So across the division, on average, we're seeing 290 students out per day. On a good day, we're seeing 239 or less students out. And on a high-absence day, we're seeing over 341 students out. We had a solid solid start at the beginning of the year, so that's the green that you can see there. Then we had some safety concerns early on in the school year, so you can see those red days. Around the holidays, we see a dip in attendance. Upon returning from the winter break, our attendance was fantastic, but then we had some inclement weather. Lots of kids in season April. We saw a change in behavior during this month and we're excited about how the effort from the school teams paid off to close the school year strong. Other than that, Mondays and Fridays have been lower attendance days overall, so just a trend to take note of. Next slide, please. As far as communications that have gone out, there have been over 18,500 communications sent out from School Status. You have a save rate of 49%. What that means is that 49% of students who got the first truancy or excessively excused absence letter have not qualified for a second letter. This shows that you all slowed down your absences and when a letter is sent or a phone call is given or a conference is completed, it is having an impact on student attendance. And lastly, any conversation with a family is an opportunity to make a connection, build a relationship and learn what their barriers to attendance are so we can better support students. Conference effectiveness would be a great focus for next school year and there are reports for that within your Attend platform. So in summary, we're developing a culture of showing up in Caroline County, which is awesome. And the data has a lot to celebrate. There's also continued work to do across the division, but especially at certain campuses and within certain grade levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Wick?
I do not, just if you guys have any questions.
Okay. Board members have questions? We know that chronic absenteeism is a major issue and we do appreciate the work that you're doing. And we can see the improvement, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to school, I'm sorry, the modular building update, Mr. Chris Caldwell.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board and Ms. Stevens. Tonight, I want to share with you updates to progress at Bowling Green Elementary School on the modular classrooms. As you can see, June was a productive month for Bowling Green modular units. We received approval for a waterline connection without needing meter updates on June 11th. An application for electric service was submitted to Rappahannock Electric on June 16th in anticipation of the modular power calculation worksheet. A significant significant step was taken on June 17th with the approval of a solution to add a six-inch valve to the waterline under the modular complex. This valve was located strategically. Location was strategically moved to the western side of the grounds to facilitate future waterline relocation associated with the proposed addition to Bowling Green Elementary School. Our waterline was decided at that point to be included as an adult for the actual move of that. We also conducted a teams meeting with the engineer on June 23rd to review this waterline plan. On June 25th, R R M M received a set of CAD drawings from Wilmont to align everything with the site plan for the modular connections. A utility map was received for the fiber line that services Bowling Green Elementary School from our I T department on June 26th. And the geological survey was completed on June 27th. Moving into July, we continue to make progress. On July 1st, the modular power calculation worksheet was received and submitted to R E C. Also on July 1st, the application, a pre-application meeting was held with R R M M engineers in the Caroline County Planning and Development to review the site plans. Site plans were sent to prospective contractors on July 7th and received and submitted permits for on July 8th. A meeting with the planning, building officials was also held on July 8th at the time of application to review any further needs. On July 9th, we received a copy of the R E C work order, fault current letter and invoice. And whiteboards for the classrooms were ordered. Finally, on July 10th, a pre-construction meeting with R E C regarding power was held and critical electrical infrastructure components were located and ordered. Our next steps involve receiving bids from contractors, receiving the sealed set of plans from Wilmont and obtaining the necessary permits. Following this, we will install the infrastructure and we will assist our contractor to apply for a fire alarm permit application that is expected to be submitted on July 16th. Regarding the units themselves, the original plan was the units to be transported from the factory on July 21st and set up on-site on July 28th with teacher move-in scheduled for August 4th. However, we have received new information indicating a potential delay in the arrivals and setup of the modular units. This means the date for the units transported from the factory, units set up on-site and teacher move-in may be pushed back a little. At this time, we, Wilmont has stated that the units will be transported from the factory beginning on July 28th. I want to assure everyone that Bowling Green Elementary School does have a comprehensive plan in place to accommodate students, staff within the existing building if this delay becomes fruition, to fruition. We're actively working on contingency plans to ensure a smooth start to the school year regardless of the modular unit timeline. We will provide updates as soon as we have more concrete information regarding the revised schedule. And we'll also provide another update during the August school board meeting. Thank you for your attention. And at this time, do you have any comments, questions or concerns?
Does board members have questions? The only question that I would have is, and I know you said that there possibly may be a delay and we're going I know we're going to do everything we can to get them. As far as where they are being placed, I just want to emphasize the fact that hopefully the placement will not obstruct the planned addition to Bowling Green. Could you kind of talk a little bit about that or kind of reassure that?
Yes, we are we are planning the the site location for the modular units. There's the basketball court closest to the community center. The addition plan for the classrooms when was designed back in 2010 for the additional classrooms was on the western side of the facility closer to my facility maintenance shop. So we are definitely off off that location onto the other side.
Okay, I just didn't want that to be, you know, become an issue. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. I believe you also have the C I P.
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board and Mrs. Stevens. Tonight, I'll walk through the capital improvement process at Caroline County Public Schools, a vital framework for enhancing our school facilities. Let's start by defining two key terms that often that are often used. Capital improvement and capital outlay. Capital improvement, this refers to projects valued over $50,000 or more that introduce a new or enhanced level of service to our facilities. Think of it as an upgrade that brings something new or significantly better. Capital outlay, this also covers items valued at $50,000 or more, but these projects do not increase service beyond current levels. These are more about maintaining or replacing existing infrastructure without new capabilities. The capital improvement process is critical for ensuring quality education. It is how we upgrade our facilities and resources to create effective learning environments that benefit our students, staff, and the entire Caroline County community. Let's dive into the key steps of this project, process. It begins with identifying needs through requests from our school departments. We also identify replacement of capital items based on their life expectancy, condition, and addressing deferred maintenance. Next, we review the requests to ensure alignment with our strategic plan. This is followed by conducting facility walks to assess needs firsthand. We hold committee meetings and various, with various activities to gather input and prioritize items. Then we move to school board workshops for in-depth discussion. The process plan is then presented at the school board meeting for approval. Once approved, we submit to Caroline County, the Caroline County Administrator. Then we meet with Caroline County Administrative Staff to review CIP and provide clarity. Please be aware that this, that the county has changed its process in recent years. We have not had the opportunity to present the CIP to the County Planning Commission for review, public hearings, or recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. Similarly, we have not had joint budget work sessions with the Board of Supervisors where we could present both the operating and the CIP budget needs. This process is a collaborated effort involving various stakeholders. Community involvement, this includes parents, local residents, business leaders, county administration, and members of the Board of Supervisor. Their input is invaluable. As a side note, the last two years, we have not had any county administration or any members of the Board of Supervisors involved in the committee, though we still invite them to join us. Our school community plays a critical role, including board members, the superintendent, administration staff, teachers, staff, and most importantly, our students. The CIP planning phase. August and September, we conduct an initial survey to gather the board input from the Caroline County Public Schools administrators. We review all requests comprehensively. Critically, we verify alignment with our strategic plan to ensure our investments support our long-term, and support our long-term goals. We also examine previous CIP requests for historic content and make sure that we are including past year's unfunded requests. Facility walkthroughs are performed to get direct understanding of the needs. Finally, we create a comprehensive spreadsheet of all requests for clear organization and tracking. In October, we gain stakeholder input. The period involves senior staff meetings, committee meetings, school board workshop. We conduct sorting activities at all lever, levels to prioritize the needs. School board meetings, November and December, the school board plays a pivotal role in the approval process through the workshop and the first read. This is where all the proposed information is reviewed, and initial feedback is gathered. The second reading, here is, here is any changes made and reviewed, and we speak, we seek formal approval for the proposed CIP budget. Once approved, this budget is then submitted to the county for inclusion into the Caroline County CIP program. Our action plan, once the school board approves the CIP, is straightforward. We submit to the, the school board-approved CIP budget to the county for inclusion in their overall CIP plan. We then request a meeting with the county administration to discuss the details. The county administration will then announce its proposed CIP funding during its first read of the county-proposed budget. Thank you for your attention. Take any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Do board members have questions regarding the, the CIP or its delivery of that information?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment to say thank you. I was taking notes in our last joint school board meeting, and this was actually a request of one of our Board of Supervisors partners to have a better understanding and to make sure that we level set and we all understand what the CIP process is. I would like to point out, if we can back up one slide, in this process, there are places for stakeholder input, and that happens in the month of October. I also wanted to point out, because a question came up about do students have an opportunity to contribute? And yes, they do through the various, through our student, school board rep, or through our superintendent advisory council. And so I want to encourage as a call to action, because right now we're talking about a lot of CIP things, the time to have that input and to be involved in that discussion is early on, so that by the time things emerge to board level, it has gone through those rounds and the feedback has been gathered. I also think it's important to point out the last bullet under November and December. So, a question that was posed to me was, you know, why, why is a joint meeting important? What does that collaborative look, process look like? What would be ideal? And I would say, in my opinion, that that bullet answers it. If we have the opportunity to have a, a conversation with an appropriating body to say, here are the concerns that have come forward, here is how we've rated them, and you've been a part of that rating process as well, then when the county is approving a CIP plan, it has voice, choice, and input at that time, and it allows all of us in decision-making capacities to be able to make informed decisions. So, in closing, thank you for taking the time to document and put this back out there. I would encourage all of my colleagues to use this presentation as we're having the conversation in the community, and then to our partners on the Board of Supervisors, this is the process that helps us be efficient, manage our time well, and manage our resources in the county. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, for going over this very detailed and thorough process with respect to the CIP development. I guess my comments are going to be tangentially related to the CIP process. I know I've shared some concerns regarding our working relationship with the Board of Supervisors. As noted in the presentation, there seems to be a area of opportunity with respect to working with our appropriating body with respect to the CIP. That concern, for me, is heightened with, with respect to our ten-year facility plan and our ability to work that plan, if you will, to address our current overcapacity and our future growth needs and concerns. As my colleagues on the board are well, well aware, we have in the past requested joint meetings with our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors to address some of these concerns. Some of those invitations have been, I won't say ignored, but we haven't had a response to our most recent invitation, which was sent to the Board of Supervisors on June the twelfth, I believe. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I just want to, if you will, open a conversation with my colleagues on the dais to that the idea of proposing a joint CIP slash facilities committee, that would be charged with moving the work forward with respect to our ten-year plan. That includes expansion of our current facilities and the eventual construction of a new elementary school. My concern is that this work that needs to be done ASAP, in my opinion, won't be done unless there is a dedicated committee that encompasses members from the Board of Supervisors, our board, as well as staff to include, for example, the county administrator, our superintendent, you, Mr. Caldwell, and perhaps even the town manager of Bowling Green, so that we can have a comprehensive, well-rounded team to make sure that all the work needs to be done to make sure that we are in the best position possible from a facilities perspective to handle our current overcapacity and our future growth. So with that, Mr. Chair, I just want to, if, if it's your willing pleasure, to have some dialogue.
He would never prevent board members from speaking, especially on an issue as, as important as this. So my answer to that is, by all means, we, we can do that. The, the only thing that I would do before that, I can kind of bring the board up to speed a little bit on some conversation that I've had with the chair of the Board of Supervisors. Now, when I say this, I, I didn't speak to the chair as speaking for the board, because the board had not given me authorization to do that. But I did speak to the chair on a one-on-one basis as me being the representative of the Port Royal District, and she also being the representative on the Board of Supervisors for the Port Royal District. So we kind of have that, that connection, I would say. And I, I did speak to her on the importance of the board, both boards meeting and talking, and having an opportunity to speak about what future plans the school board feels are going to be necessary, and to have an opportunity to get feedback from the Board of Supervisors as to what their interest or concerns may be. Because when you sit at the table, you can respond in a way that's a little different than when you're writing a letter or when you're posting something on social media. She has pretty much assured me that once we pass the memograph of understanding that we are now working on for the addition to the new, to Bowling Green. Once we get that taken care of through our attorneys or however we end up doing that, whether our, whether we send information to our attorneys and they do that, or our attorneys work out an agreement that's agreeable to both, whichever way we do that, once we get that done, she has pretty much said that she would see or look into or try to be certain that we would have a joint board meeting. So I kind of left it at that, because as I said, I did not have permission, the board didn't send me to talk with her. And so I was speaking to her basically on my own and as a representative for the Port Royal District. So, having said that, I will then allow anyone else on the board who would, would want to make a comment regarding Mr. Fortune's suggestion.
Mr. Fortune, I appreciate you bringing that topic up. I was waiting for my peers to see if anyone else had something to say, but I'll go for it. I do think that the idea of having a joint committee with a specific focus of looking at that ten-year goal is not a bad idea. I would say, though, that the process that we currently have in place values the feedback from our teachers who are in our buildings and in our classrooms, our administrators who know what they need and what they see, the directors who are charged with doing the walkthroughs. And so I would pause with anything that would have an unintended consequence that board members, either on this board or our Board of Supervisors, would supersede the voice of those who are in the trenches and involved in the daily operation. So, if it is a way to parallel that, because the last thing that I think we want to have happen, and this is no disrespect to anyone, but I do not think that it is a, a proper insertion of board authority at the level of generating the concerns or the request and taking it through that process. So, I think the process that Mr. Caldwell outlined with our CIP committee needs to maintain the integrity of that. Board members should not be top-down telling principals and teachers what they need in their building, but rather we should be getting that information from the grassroots. I hate to say bottom-up, but we understand the hierarchy and the structure. I do think that the benefit of doing a parallel process is that if members engage in the stakeholder cycle where, where it is designed to be, then there is more opportunity for ongoing conversation and engagement. I think the other thing that dovetails into your request is, and I ask about this often, I am interested in seeing the county strategic plan. The county strategic plan, because in a county strategic plan, education, yes, there's a zoning piece, there's an economic impact piece, but again, there's that impact on schools, so, any opportunity for us to continue to have a conversation is good, but I think that the boundary.
Said that he would be willing to jump in and participate, and then like two days later just said he thought it would be a conflict of interest if he did that. But I, I'm all about it, any opportunity to, I think more eyes and more opinions are good, but like Dr. Rollins Fell says, you know, as someone who works in a building, like people in the building are the ones who are really going to know, especially with CIP, what needs to be done. I'm not, you know, case in point, like football stadium, I'm not under the bleachers checking out to see what's there, and when there was stuff that wasn't up to code, you know, I'm not the guy that's going to know what the code is exactly, but when Chris says, we've got to get this stuff up to code, that means we got to. So, if we could get them involved at the committee level to talk about this and see some of the things and understand some of the nuances of what goes into it, I would be all in favor of that.
Chair?
Yes.
Based on your conversations with your counterpart, our current chairperson of the Board of Supervisors, it sounds as if she has provided some rudder and direction going forward, and I think we ought to govern ourselves with.
We were trying to go. And again, Mr. Fortune, that is by no means to say that I feel like you have overstepped or that I don't agree. I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking that based on what I'm hearing from the majority of the board, maybe we want to give it an opportunity with what we have.
Like I said, you know, I guess my concern with a joint committee working on, on those issues, so that the work doesn't get lost, and that the work is a contingent upon agreement of joint meetings here and there. There's a rhythm, if you will, if there's a committee that's dedicated to that work. So that was my only point.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, thank you, Mr. Caldwell, we, we appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to get there.
I did have one thing, one other thing I did want to mention, because I've heard it come up several times.
it come up several times, is, you know, we have a 10-year facility plan. We build a five-year CIP plan. The county looks one year in advance when they provide, when we provide that data to them.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, that then takes us to the legislative information. Mr. Mudd.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Ms. Stevens. Tonight I'm sharing with you recent legislative updates that will or will potentially impact students across the Commonwealth. This legislative season, there were 236 bills related to education that were proposed. A number of these bills take, took effect this month, some of which were related to things like student health services. We'll be coming back to you actually in a month or two to update some policies related to some of this new legislation. In addition, there were some updates regarding student enrollment and records and a few items related to students with disabilities and process-related items regarding due process hearings, among other regulatory items. I'm naming here just a sampling of what was, what has gone into effect on July 1. There are two items in particular I would like to specifically share this evening related to two different bills. The Virginia Department of Education has provided technical assistance and/or updates related to these matters to support school divisions in the Commonwealth with questions and/or implementation. First, I'm going to share with you House Bill 2686 that recently went into effect for implementation this coming school year related to acceleration in advanced or accelerated mathematics. The policy should provide for the automatic enrollment of eligible students in advanced or accelerated mathematics based on standards of learning assessment scores in the statewide upper quartile, subject to course offerings and availability. For auto enrollment in advanced or accelerated math for the 25-26 school year, school divisions are to use the statewide upper quartile scores in the table that you can see on this slide on the left. These scores were generated from 2025 Standards of Learning Mathematics Assessments, and a new table will be released to school divisions each June following the spring testing season. As staff learned more about the potential of this bill lit this past spring, we began meeting to determine potential, to determine potential impacts. Now that this bill has passed, we are identifying students, and has gone into effect on July 1, we are now identifying students and contacting parents to explain the change as well as as well as explaining the already established math pathways that we have here in Caroline County. Our pathways, which have already been in existence, align well with this new practice. Parents will have the option to opt their child out of the accelerated math pathway should they wish for their child not to take the accelerated pathway. In addition, we're currently in the process of creating a policy that we will be bringing forward to you likely in August for first read that includes components related to math acceleration as required by this bill. The second item I wanted to bring to your attention is, was House Bill 1957. This one is the one that we're keeping an eye on. This did not go into effect this year, but it is one that was noted to be considered again in the next legislative season with some components of it being implemented beginning July 1, 2026. This bill, Board of Education Standards of Learning Assessments, largely aimed at maximizing instructional time and optimizing time used for assessment administration. This bill includes provisions relating to eligibility and timelines for students to retake assessments and the scoring of Standards of Learning Assessments and related assessments. This last piece is particularly noteworthy because the proposal at this time is a change in scaled scoring for target grade levels on the SOL test, moving from a 600 to 100-point scale. The bill includes a requirement that all end-of-course assessments at the target grade levels, which are likely are upper-grade levels, would be administered no earlier than two weeks prior to the last day of the school year, as well as assessments administered as part of competency-based assessment systems would be included in that as well, potentially. The proposed bill requires the Board of Education to provide any teacher who participates in the scoring of Standards of Learning Assessments professional development points towards renewal of their license for the time spent scoring such assessments. Certain provisions of the bill do not be, do not go into effect unless reenacted in the 2026 legislative session, and some are earmarked to be delayed for a July 1 implementation. We will be revisiting this item with you likely again next summer. But because of both of these items have been, you have potentially, likely read about these recently, we wanted to bring them to your attention here tonight. This concludes a review of some legislation that was captured, that's captured some attention in the recent weeks. You may have heard or read about both of these items. We wanted to bring them forward to you for your awareness as well as our community's awareness. Bills requiring new or updated policies will be brought forward to you in the coming months. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, I do have a question, and I don't know if I heard correctly, but I heard you say something about the assessment being, for this 1957 bill, the assessment being given not earlier than, did you say, two weeks-
That's right.
-prior to-
What was proposed this year, and again, it will be revisited, so it could certainly change, but what was proposed this year was looking at target grade levels, again, not elementary, kind of morphed into not elementary, but more upper grades, but that the testing window would be pushed to really the last two weeks of school.
Right. And I'm thinking in terms of a graduating senior who needs that class or that score could be a deterrent to that person graduating or not graduating. And I don't know what we can do about that, but that concerns me greatly because that could very well affect our graduation rates. And it's, I don't know if it's fair to the student as well.
I think you're raising some questions that I've read others raising as well, related to that particular item. We have, we have had opportunities, really in both cases, really all cases, to provide feedback, but there has been quite a bit of feedback related to this particular bill, 1957.
Okay. All right, well, just kind of keep us informed, let us know.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question about, so it's just the last two weeks of the academic year. So if, does that, like with how seniors always, usually graduation is before the end of the academic year, is that going to change anything for us?
So depending on how it's written, and of course, this isn't anything that's been approved at this point, but we, there certainly would be calendar implications, depending on how it's written in past. But again, that, your comment is one that I've also read as feedback for things that need to be considered related to this bill.
And last question, to your knowledge, is there going to be students who, like, don't pass the SOL, there's still going to be an opportunity for a retake depending upon what their first score was?
Right. So that is also part of the concern in condensing the window, is it limits retake opportunities? So that's, that's a big question out there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're raising many of the same questions that I've read about, that others across the Commonwealth have asked regarding this particular bill.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other comments from any board members? If not, thank you, Mr. Mudd. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to monthly revenue. Okay.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Mrs. Stevens. This evening I'll be presenting the financial report for June of FY '25. Operating revenues for June were $4.00 million, with year-to-date revenues of $62.2 million or 98.27%. Special fund revenues for June were $205,000, with year-to-date revenues of $7.1 million or 70.91%. Total revenues for all funds for June were $4.3 million, with year-to-date totals of $69.4 million or 94.50%. Under expenditures, operating expenditures for June were $6.2 million, with year-to-date expenditures of $56.2 million or 88.82%. Special funds expenditures for June were $650,000, with $7.3 million year-to-date or 72.94%. Total expenditures for all funds for June were $6.9 million with year-to-date or 86.63%. Be happy to take any questions from the board on the June Fiscal Year '25 Financial Report.
Or whatever it is that we get. And I know that that always is fun with bookkeeping because that revenue comes in for the fiscal year, even though our fiscal year ends. But how are those projections looking?
Did you say food tax?
What is it called, Ms. Stevens? The sales tax, the dining tax, whatever it is?
Certainly, Mr. Kelly, it's the sales tax. The sales tax comes in in July and August. We are monitoring those. We are showing that we are above projections at this time.
Okay. Because I know there's been times where we, you know, we budget for what we think it's going to be, and then it's less, and then sometimes it's more, so it's always, that's why the audit's always so much on it. All right, there's only one question. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Caldwell.
I'm looking at the head start balance, remaining balance, once, help me understand what I'm seeing there.
The $119,000?
I got one, head start, 170-
Are you under revenues or expenditures?
Expenditures.
Other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that takes us to, I believe, our consent agenda. That is to approve the consent agenda with, which includes minutes from June 9th, regular meeting, school board meeting, June 11th meeting continuation, minutes from CCPS board retreat, CCPS master board training, donations, homeschool report, head start financial report, and monthly bills with financial reports as provided. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like to pull or question?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
The motion carries, and the consent agenda stands approved as presented. That takes us to citizen comments. The Caroline County School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings and public meetings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda or an item not on the agenda during this time. Any comments should address the matter related to Car- Any speaker who uses language that is obscene constitutes fighting words, true threats, or solicitude threats, or solicitation to commit crimes and incites immediate lawless action. Moreover, the Chair may stop or have removed any person who disrupts the orderly functioning of the meeting by making loud, boisterous, or threatening comments. Once you have come to the lectern, if you would have signed in with the clerk, please complete the appearance request form, state your name and your district at this time. The clerk will call for those who have strict at this time. The clerk will call for those who have signed up prior to the meeting. All right, sign us. Is there anyone, or is there, is there anyone here who would like to speak at this time? Is there anyone here who would like to speak at this time? Again, is there anyone here who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one with the intention to speak, I will now declare this period closed. Okay, that takes us to, we're getting there. Action items. Approval A, 25-26 tuition rates per pupil. Dr. Purney.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening again, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Mrs. Stevens. I'm here this evening to request approval of the 25-26 tuition rates, as well as the per-pupil expenditures report in accordance with Virginia Code 22.1-92. Because the per-pupil expenditures report informs the tuition rates, I'll begin with that. The Virginia Department of Education includes the following components in the calculation of per-pupil expenditures: regular-day school, school food services, summer school, adult education, and other educational programs. However, expenditures related to facilities, debt service, and capital outlay additions are excluded. The average per-pupil expenditure is derived from Table 15 of the Virginia Department of Education's annual school report. The estimate for fiscal year 2026 is based on the school board's adopted budget. The total estimated per-pupil expenditure is $17,300, which compromises $9,755 in state funds, $1,611 from the state sales tax, $1,743 in federal funds, and $4,190 in local funding. Now regarding tuition rates, each year the school board adopts tuition rates based on the per-pupil expenditure outlined in the adopted budget. For FY '26, or FY '26, the proposed rate for out-of-county tuition is $4,190, reflecting the local per-pupil cost. The tuition rate for out-of-state students is proposed at $17,300, which represents the total per-pupil cost. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the 2025-26 tuition rates or the per-pupil expenditures report.
Any board members have questions regarding the tuition rates?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Federal funds, so each allocates $1743 per student. If we, is there any chances we would lose those funds?
Yes, good question. Some of them. In fact, I thought that might come up in my last presentation, so let me just grab notes because I got a memo from the State.
Okay.
So the division superintendents received a notice from VDOE, Federal Funding Update, this past week. The Virginia, I'll read just parts of it that hits the highlights.
Sure.
The Virginia Department of Education has recently received a series of federal updates from the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education at the United States Department of Education and the United States Office of Management and Budget Management. OESC recently informed states the agency is reviewing six specific grants for federal fiscal year 2026 or 2025 awards. Those are Title I Part C migrant children, Title II support and effective instruction state grants, Title III Part A English language acquisition, Title IV Part A student support and academic enrichment state grants, Title IV Part B, which is 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and then Adult Basic and Literacy Education state grants. So these grants are not going to be distributed until a final review is, and decisions are made at the federal level. And so they're going to identify a date, a date has not been identified yet for completion. So we're in wait-and-see mode. If there's any good news, the two largest funding streams for K-12 schools, which is Title I A for low-income students and IDEA for students with disabilities, are on schedule for disbursement. Ms. Stevens did a workup for the superintendent in looking at FY '24 grants, trying to base possible loss of revenues based upon those six areas that are being reviewed. And the cost for us could be as much as $173,000. So we're on pins and needles, waiting to see, you know, when that's going to come down. There is potential. It's possible those, you know, we don't get to full $173,000 based upon, you know, what they're looking at, but that is a concern.
Follow-up. So let's assume the worst, and we don't get the 173. How do we envision mitigating the shortfall?
Yeah, so I think, it's a good question, and I think the approach would be like we would for any possible loss of revenue, look at all our funding streams, look at how we can maybe have some cost savings, and- Look at how we can maybe have some cost savings and, um, where we could trim. So that would be a broad looking at, you know, our entire seventy three million dollar, um, or at least our operations budget to see, um, how we can support these.
Sure that when we prioritize what is impacted, we, we articulated clearly, you know, what's, what should not be touched or what.
Sure.
You know, what are really protecting those areas. So I'm sure that we've done a, you know, we've done the due diligence. I, I know you have. But, um, you know, my, my responsibility on the board is funding, part of that is funding. So I want to make sure that, um, if, if we have some choppy waters ahead of us, that we, we try to plan as best we can, and I know between you and Marsha, you know, we will do that. I just want to make sure that, uh, if there's anything we can do to support this, let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. And the superintendent, um, has called for us to have a meeting with directors who are over those, those funding sources along Marsha and Mr. Mudd. And, um, we'll be doing that short order again. We just got this. Uh, but one of the things I will say, um, not just because I work here now, but been in education thirty five years, and this division, um, communicates like no other. And the pre-planning and then the delivery of whatever it is we're doing is exceptional. So like anything else we do, we'll study, we'll debrief, uh, make decisions on what's best for children, and then collaborate with the board and make recommendations.
Can I indulge just rabbit hole just for thirty seconds? So, you know, part of the governor's, uh, proposal has also been, uh, providing, you know, tax rebates and whatnot for, uh, school choice. Now, if I understand it, so if a, if that goes through, would we lose, let's say, this is one student, and say we lose one student, so would that one seventy seventeen three go away? And we have to basically, you know, mitigate for that as well, or am I mis- misreading and misinterpreting that?
What, Marsha? I'm not a good lip reader. I need glasses.
Good evening. The state funding portion would be the one that would go away because that's based on ADM, if we lost that student due to store, the school.
You know, and projections are projections and appropriations are appropriations, and then you drill down throughout the course of the year, and you see what funding sources have got, have come in. And, you know, right now, we're still, um, we're still working out of two fiscal years right now because we're trying to close out FY twenty five, open up FY twenty six, and, and we're collaboratively, um, with our partners in, in the county.
We have some, um, mandated services, uh, that are, would be involved in these funds if they were cut. So how, how do we address mandated services if we have no funds, if the funds are not there? I mean, I know too, but, um, that's what you kind of.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, if it's mandated, we have to do it. We've got to find a way. And, you know, um, approaches could be looking at, um, you know, what funds, funny sources do we have? What carryover do we have? That's another big thing that would offset some of this, is we have several grants we carry over, um, which makes us be able to sleep a little bit better at night. Um, so again, it comes down to, you know, making decisions based upon what we have to provide children, what we should provide, what they need. And then there's always ways that you can cut back a little bit here and there. Um, you know, and there's various approaches, whether it's materials and supplies, or, um, professional development, or whatever it might be, maybe. And it's, you know, a lot of times it's based upon the, um, parameters and the goals that are in that particular grant, in that grant. So job one would be to go a deep dive into those grants, what the objectives are, what we've signed off for, and how they align with our division plan.
Okay, uh, are there other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the twenty five twenty six tuition rates as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, it's moved in properly. Second, that we approve the, uh, twenty five twenty six, uh, tuition rates per pupil as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion stands approved as presented. That takes us to the calendar update. Uh, Mr. Mudd.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board. As we were preparing for the start of the school year, it was brought to my attention that our nine required workday PD days for our pair educators as part of their one hundred and eighty four day contract did not include Monday, August fourth, which is the beginning of our return to, to work a week and, uh, getting ready for the school year. Recognizing the importance of our pair professionals reporting to work on this date along with other instructional staff, I'm here tonight requesting approval to a small calendar change. After consulting with division and building leaders, we are proposing to add August fourth as a required workday for pair professionals and remove March ninth as a required workday. The removal of March ninth, uh, reflects minimal impact to our professional development calendar for pair professionals. We request waiving of the first read of this action item so that we can begin communicating this change with pair professionals. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have questions regarding the proposed change?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the updated calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Case we moved in properly, second that we would.
Question.
I'm sorry, question. I'm sorry.
So, um, if I'm understanding the dates, we're just switching, uh, days.
That's right.
It's not an increase in pay or anything.
That's correct. So the original dates are in the first bullet there. You could see they started with eight five. Um, and so we recognize the error, but we looked collectively as building and division leaders to figure out which of these dates would be best to kind of, we called it a trade out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any, any other questions? Are we ready for the vote? Okay, call for the vote, uh, Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
And I vote aye as well. That, um, stands approved, uh, as presented.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to the VPSA Technology Bond Resolution. Mr. Robertson.
Good evening, Chair. Mr. Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board, and Mrs. Stevens. This evening I come forward seeking approval of the Technology Bond Reimbursement Resolution, also known as VPSA in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars, plus a local match of twenty percent. In previous years, the state has provided these technology grants to local school divisions to equip schools to participate in online testing. The purchases are financed with proceeds from bond sales conducted by the Virginia Public Schools Authority. Expenditures incurred by school divisions are submitted to the state for reimbursement. Because the bonds are tax exempt, the Virginia Department of Education requires the adoption of the attached resolution located in your packets to comply with federal regulations regarding reimbursements from bond proceeds. Therefore, it is recommended that the board approve the Technology Bond Reimbursement Resolution. At this time, I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Robertson? If not, we can, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, that we approve the VSBA Technology Bond Resolution as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. That takes us to agenda item D, code of conduct addition. Mr. Wick.
Good evening, Chair. Mr. Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board, and Ms. Stevens. The board approved in June the latest code of conduct updates, which was very few. But, uh, then, then we learned of a piece of legislation. It was passed this past spring, I guess. Um, it came to my attention last week where legislation called Senate Bill nine oh eight requires schools to include in their code of conduct and in their policies, um, a stipulation where they address instances of cyberbullying that occur outside of school property between students enrolled in the school division. So tonight I just want to get your approve, make you aware, get your approval to add that sentence basically into the bullying portion of the code of conduct.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion stands approved. That takes us to prove. That takes us to agenda item number ten, new business of first read CCPS and VSBA policies update. Mr. Mudd. SBA policies update. Mr. Mudd.
The time has come, Mr. Kelly. All right. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the school board. Tonight I bring to you VSBA policy suggested changes that have been uploaded to board docs in draft mode for your review. The Virginia School Board Association provides updates in February and May based on changes in law and regulations. In addition, law and regulations. In addition, a few policies are revised for editorial reasons or to correct technical errors. In the following presentation, we have the policies that are currently being revised and are reviewed by Carlin County Schools. Tonight, we're providing the first read of a portion of the May twenty five policies, and in August, we will ask for the adoption of the revised policies. In addition, we have numerous May suggested policies that are needing substantial review. I will be convening a policy review team this month to provide us time to take a deeper dive into some of these policies. We will come forward in August with some additional first readings of those policies as well. I will now continue with VSBA suggested policy changes that were reviewed by CCPS senior leadership. And as you know, I will read through each one, the title, and, uh, move our way through as quickly as I can, but certainly happy to address any questions you may have. Policy EBBA, Emergency First Aid CPR and AED Personnel. Policy EBCB, Opioid Antagonists. Policy FEA, Educational Facilities Specifications. Policy GAB slash IIBEA, Acceptable Computer Systems Use. Policy GBEB, Staff Weapons in Schools. Policy C, excuse me, GCB, Professional Staff Contracts. Policy GCD, Effect of Criminal Conviction or Founded Complaint of Child Abuse or Neglect. Policy GCG, Professional Staff Probationary Term and Continuing Contract. Policy GCPD, Professional Staff Discipline. Policy IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. Policy IGAJ, Driver Education. Policy IGBGA, Online Courses and Virtual School Programs. Policy IIBEA slash GAB, Acceptable Computer Systems Use. This next policy, um, was deleted in, in its entirety and no longer exists. Policy J CJ, Classroom Assignment for Twins. Policy JEC dash R, School Admission. Policy JFC, Student Conduct. Policy JFCD, Weapons in Schools. Policy JFCI, Substance Abuse Student Assistance Program. Policy JO, Student Records. Policy KBA, Requests for Public Records. Policy LBD, Home Instruction. Policies reviewed but not revised from May twenty five. Policy BDD, Rules of Order. GAD, Access to Employee Social Media Accounts. GB dash F, Report of Discrimination. And IEB, National Motto. As I mentioned before, we have nineteen policies that will require a deeper review. A policy review team, uh, meeting will be taking place later this month in anticipation of bringing new and revised policies forward for first read in August and September. Thank you for your time and attention to our policies first read. Please refer to board docs to review all changes in draft mode, and we'll return again in August for approval of revised policies that were reviewed this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Okay. That takes us to. School board member, uh, commi- uh, comments. I'm sorry. All right, uh, we will start up at this end this time. Dr. Hubbard, would you like to go first this time?
Well, uh, first and foremost, uh, let me begin by saying I trust everyone is, despite these meetings and every, all these other, uh, events, uh, that everyone is enjoying their summer break, um, continue to, uh, recommend folks to get out and relax, read a book, get away, uh, spend some quality time with your, your folks, you know, but just, you know, get away and remember and recharge before you, you know, before we get back into things. The second point, uh, I thoroughly enjoyed hosting, um, the CCPS, uh, leadership team uh, down at the University of Mary Washington's Doggerdine Campus. Uh, I think we had a, a pretty good time, um, and, uh, look forward to getting all back down there, uh, next time. Usually when we have adults, we, uh, pull out some of the, uh, uh, the, the, the gear uh, that we use to, uh, uh, challenge the students, uh, and put you at a table and let you go at it. So, uh, you know, that's what you got to look forward to the next time you come down. I would remiss to say that, uh, yes, we did indeed participate in the school board retreat and master board recertifications. Uh, they're in Charlottesville, so we certainly, uh, do a shout out to, uh, the Virginia School Board Association for, uh, guiding us through uh, master board recertification, uh, and our leadership for getting us through that, uh, first day of, uh, retreat. Looking forward to hosting our second annual CCPS Day of STEM, uh, that's going to take place this Wednesday. Uh, I really want to do a shout out to, uh, Melanie Mosley, who, uh, has spearheaded, uh, our events, um, this Wednesday. And if I'm not mistaken, our, our newest count is we've got just about forty students will be down to, uh, to participate in STEM activities for the day. Uh, let's see, and I guess the last thing is to, just to, you know, push out a, uh, a sincere thanks to the families and friends of my Bowling Green District uh, for their continued support as we, uh, continue this journey of ensuring that, uh, our kids get the best possible education, uh, that we can, that we can afford. Other than that, Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Hubbard, uh, Mr. Fortune.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, I just want to, uh, personally thank Dr. Calverick for facilitating our, um, board retreat uh, in Charlottesville. Um, I think that, um, that retreat, um, and the work that we did in that retreat has made us a, a much, a stronger and more cohesive board, if I, if I may say so. Um, also shout it out the, uh, VSBA for the, um, master board certification training that we, uh, underwent on the, on that next day. Once again, I just commend my colleagues on the dais, uh, for doing the work, um, that really makes us a master board. We had the opportunity to review our norms and protocols and engaged in some courageous conversations um, that, once again, I believe puts us in the best position possible to do the very best that we can, uh, for our students, staff, and families in the division. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll leave the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. Uh. Dr. Rollins Fells?
Yes, sir. Um, so while there were no recognitions listed in the program tonight, I did want to center my comments on celebratory remarks. And I wrote them out so I could stay on task. I am so grateful and thankful to work alongside such amazing people, my fellow Board Members. And I wanted to just take a moment to celebrate you because we've put in the work and I think it's important as we end one school year and begin another. You all are student centered and what I experienced was being in a room with selfless servant leaders. The thoughtful questions that are asked that help us to deepen our understanding and our community's understanding is truly appreciated. Let's keep the good, meaningful questions coming. The time that you all and we all have invested to do background research, to be able to speak factually and not emotionally speaks to your dedication. Thank you, sir. Celebrating the courageous thoughts and taking the initiative to propose new concepts and approaches to ideas is refreshing. The dedication of Board Members to understand the culture of Caroline County and to move swiftly past campaigning into service has been an absolute view. While in St. Louis at the National Safety Conference, there were panelists and experts that happened to be sitting at the table where I was. I mentioned earlier, the keynote and facilitator for a full day was the principal at Columbine High School. After their presentations, one of the speakers asked me what was a key takeaway point from the presentation and I said, "There are two that I'll take home with me." One was that relationships matter. Relationships matter. Relationships with our kids, with our families and with our community. In our Board Retreat, we had a self-reflection time and we spoke about continuing to do the, it's time to revisit that. I think there's much work to be done for our community in the days ahead and while we may not have needed it in that way in the past, we most certainly, when we look ahead, know that there is much work to be done. Having said that, the work that needs to be done is heavily related to schools and the bigger community conversation. Last month in my comments, I stated that we are, in both boards, twelve people who make decisions that impact over thirty thousand individuals. Relationships matter. And then the second takeaway was while watching the panel of the most highly-degreed alphabet soup, um, these are folks that are the call to, that are put on helicopters and planes and sent out immediately. The panelists would make Google blush. And what I took away was watching them talk to each other and amongst themselves and to the audience, everyone was so humble. Humble. It almost brought me to tears when I thought about what in the world have these people seen and experienced that have given them the wisdom that they had in order to be able to share what they were sharing. Why here? As we're embarking on a new school year, there is sage wisdom for all of us, teachers. There's no pride in being the expert or shame in being the novice. If you have a question, ask it. There is a system of support and we've talked about that all night, here to support you, to help guide you in your career path. If you are part of the hashtag #OneCarolineFamily, we want to keep you here in Caroline County. Make an appointment with HR if you are not certain. I know there's a lot of conversation happening with our provisionally licensed teachers. You don't need to fumble through that. Call HR, make an appointment, get the help that you need. You are here and you're a part of the team and the messages that we got you. For our students and families, as we began to get back into the pattern of school routines, starting, maybe we got a couple more weeks left for summer, but starting the top of August, um, I want to let you know that Caroline's Promise is hosting a school supply distribution event on July twenty-sixth from ten to twelve and it's held here at Caroline High School. So if you are listening, the call to action is mark your calendar and come. Here's an opportunity for our community members to be a good neighbor. Tell your neighbor as well. With that event, you'll get a book bag when you enter and you will literally go around a parade of tables of different community partners that have everything that is on our school supply list. So if you're in need, please come out. Know that we're going to celebrate your achievements and your progress. And then to our School Board Members and to the Directors who are always here in this room, I want to applaud you because you are subject matter experts. To our Board, they are all around us. I want you to continue to focus on, and I'm talking to our Board, it's our role to set the focus and the vision for our county and it is our responsibility to empower our leaders who are, to be the subject matter expert that you are. We have created a culture where your voice is valued, it is allowed, and we don't want you to tell us what you think we want to hear. We want you to give us your recommendations based upon your subject matter expertise. We have the top staff in the Commonwealth and I would dare say I'd put you up against folks across the nation. So keep up the good work. Days that are coming, we need to lean into your subject matter expertise. A comment to Bowling Green Elementary, all I want to say to that is thank you for being a champion for impact. And as we delve deeper into capital improvement and capital outlay, the bigger conversation about this joint MOU that's in development and our journey to a new elementary school and the ten-year CIP plan, let's continue our Board Agreement of being a good partner with our Board of Supervisors, the appropriating body. We all have something in our backgrounds that have equipped us for our service. It is a season to be humble with our knowledge and come together because together we are smarter and we are stronger than we are individually. So let's be agile enough to pivot with the needs of our time and let's take actionable steps that move us forward. Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you Chair Taylor. To continue with the celebratory feeling, I would like to congratulate our five CHS students who have attended or are going to be attending both the Commonwealth Governor's School Summer Residential Program for Performing and Visual Arts and Humanities, which was held at Radford University, and the Region One Gifted CTE Governor's School Residential Program, which is going to be held at Randolph-Making College. These are very intense programs and we are very proud of our students who attended those. As stated by my colleagues, our Board Retreat was excellent. There was lots of learning and conversation happening and I'm really proud to be a part of this Board, especially with people who are willing to learn and change and grow as Board Members. I'm growing as a Board Member and so I really appreciate the conversations that we can have. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, the Board Retreat was excellent with Dr. Calverick. That was very interesting. My favorite part was us looking at our styles and how we do stuff and how we're, each one of us has a different style, but we all work together and like Juanda said, it is all about relationships and we all have a relationship here and at times we're like family because we're all in this together for the same thing. And sometimes when you lock us in a room together, we don't always agree on everything and I think that those are good, healthy conversations for us to have with each other, for us to grow and see where each other is coming from and our motivations and we help develop a way to get to where we want to go. Statements about our staff is absolutely incredible. She was here when we did the renovation before. I started when they did the first renovation on Bowling Green Elementary School and I know we've got the academic aspect of the year coming ahead and when you start throwing in all the constructions, trying to build a new school and do what's best for our kids, we see our staff getting pulled in multiple directions and Mr. Caldwell, I know you are burning the midnight oil and burning the candle at both ends.
Thank you, thank you very much. I was going to say this is not Sarah, but she did a good job pinching for Sarah. And not only she, but that's typical of the staff that we have. Our staff, as has been said, is a great staff. I will put them up against staff anywhere. And I can't acknowledge enough how appreciative we are for the staff that we have and for the job that you do. I can't say enough how much I appreciate my colleagues on the DIAS. And you know, we say that all the time, but we really mean that. I believe that we are an example of what a School Board should be and I don't mean bragging type of thing, I don't mean it in that way, but I believe that we have shown the students and staff how leadership is supposed to look to the public. You know, if you've been reading the papers, you read about School Boards in this general area that have real issues. The DIAS themselves, they disagree and that's okay, but sometimes they actually become hostile toward each other. We never do that. We never have had that and I don't believe that we ever will, that we have with each other. We are very fortunate because we have had, or we have experiences in different areas and so there is no problem that we come up with that somebody doesn't have some experience with and that's a good thing. As I said in the beginning, Dr. Calverick, as you know, is not here tonight because she is attending the National Superintendent's Conference where I might add she is presenting. That lets you know what kind of superintendent we have. She was Superintendent of the Year. She has been recognized by many, many different areas. And when we go to conferences and we say we're from Caroline, people say, "Oh, that's Sarah Calverick." She's a real good superintendent. And they're not saying that just to us, they say that because she has done a good job, she's been a good leader. She's not perfect, but then we're not perfect either. But we all are perfect in the way that we recognize our weaknesses and we are willing to do what we have to do in order to make it better. So again, having said that, thank you for being here and thank you for all of that you do, all of what you do. And we're going to go into closed session so the newlyweds, Mr. Fortune and Jeff can go home before it gets too late. Oh, I'm sorry. And I do, I forgot that. And then I will have comments from our, from our today Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. While summer often signals a time of rest and recharge for Caroline County Public Schools, it's also a season of purposeful planning and hard work behind the scenes. When the school doors close for the students, the work continues as just as much energy and intention. Across the Division, our operations teams have been hard at work finalizing the school year closeout, balancing and reconciling budgets, cleaning up files and operational systems, making sure we're fully prepared to launch strong next month. It's close, it's close. Facilities work hasn't slowed down either. We continue progress on the CMS HVAC project, CHS project tackling force stripping and refinishing and managing the distribution of classroom furniture. All efforts aimed at creating a welcoming, clean and comforting learning environment for our students and staff. But that's half of the story. Our summer programming has just been as vibrant, from engaging STEM and reading pop-ups to the successful summer academies, we're making students stay connected to learning. Our senior leadership team has actively been seeking to continue amazing partnerships, visiting UMW Dahlgren and the State Fair of Virginia to explore innovative opportunities that align with our mission. Our summer learning has been in full swing with our retreats for leadership, administrative assistance, instructional leadership teams, along with our School Board and the Master Board Training. Learning AI products has been adding enhancements to each of our tool belts. We will be proudly supporting Bright Beginnings with YMCA, watch our students attend the FFA camps and celebrating students' accomplishments at our summer graduations. The Cavs Golf Tournament is coming soon and will bring the community together to support student success and we're continually welcoming new employees to our team through orientation and recruitment efforts that ensure our staff are ready and inspired for the year ahead. Even during these hot days, CCPS is working, planning, building, partnering and striving for excellence. So much of what ensures a strong start to the school year happens and we're proud of the teams who make that happen every single day. Thank you to everyone who continues to move our mission forward even when the hallways are quiet. Together, we're preparing for another great year in Caroline. And Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. We will now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Move to enter into closed session for the purpose of the Superintendent's Personal Agenda for the discussion of appointments and stipends, grants, summer school, resignations, retirements, corrections, position changes, step changes and a number of days changing as authorized by the Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3. We will entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we would go into executive session under the above-read conditions. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries, we are now in executive session. Aye. And the motion carries. We are now in executive session.
Yes. Dr. Rollins Fells. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
I need a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel agenda.
I move for approval of the superintendent's personnel agenda.
Order we need to certify first, please.
Been moved in proper second that we approved the superintendent's personnel agenda.
Point of order, we need to certify closed session.
Okay, before that, we have to certify, I'm sorry. We have to certify that we only discuss those things that we went into closed session to discuss. You so certify, Mr. Kelly?
I so certify.
So certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
Dr. Hubbard.
I so certify.
And I so certify as well. Now we will entertain a motion to adopt the superintendent's agenda as presented.
I move for approval of the superintendent's personnel agenda.
Been moved in proper second that we adopt the superintendent's personnel agenda as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Hi.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye, and the personnel agenda has been adopted. Move for adjournment?
Has moved for adjournment? I couldn't help it, um, yes.
Okay, it's second. Been moved in proper second that we would so adjourn.
Thirded.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Drive safe.